Or subtract.
Remember you saying that and I don't remember what it was, so we can put it on there. It was non-public, right?
I have a non-public too, so if you're gonna add one IR.
I think so.
We need one under A and C. There we get, we're good.
Anybody else? Alright, then we will move on. And nothing on number four still?
Nope.
Alright, so we're jumping to number five. Making good time. Feeling it's gonna slow down.
It's gonna slow down.
So first order of business, under immediate business is the 2425 school calendar.
So this was vetted. We looked at it as an administrative team and then we did change it today. We didn't have the most updated version, but the only change was the March. We had moved the parent conferences from the 21st to the 28th. So if you saw it on the 21st, it got changed today. That was it. We just forgot to put the new one in. Other than that, we did talk to the EAP and Scott did a survey about starting before or after Labor Day because we are getting out on June 20th. And I had the results somewhere. Did I do with them? Hold on one sec. So forty percent, forty-seven point nine percent said we should start before Labor Day. Fifty-two percent said we should start after Labor Day. If we started, if we backed it up because the EAP negotiated for full teacher days, we would be going back and starting the staff on August 20th, which cuts the summer pretty short. So if we go with the fifty-two percent after Labor Day and that would start the staff where they are now, August 26th, otherwise the kids would be starting on the 26th and the staff would be the 20th, which I think is pretty early. It's a little bit, extends us a little bit because there's a longer Christmas break and there is an extra voting day in there that we have to have off. So it did push it out a little bit, but.
Can I comment real quick? I also like the idea of year-to-year consistency. Since we made this change, it would be nice to just kinda stick with it.
Yeah. Yes. Yep. Do you wanna look at my paper one?
Any other questions, concerns? All the typical, it jives with CRTC and yada yada.
Yep. No, it never jives exactly with CRTC, but. Close enough.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Right, any other discussion? Gene, go ahead.
It was on there last year. Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that's, I'm pretty sure that's how it's designated by the state now.
I think it was probably either the state or Concord because that's usually what we start from.
Anything else? Alright, then all in favor of approving the 2425 school district calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Alright, next one is current year budget update.
Nothing got updated since your last update, which I think was three hundred and ninety thousand deficit. I think there was some retirement stuff due to come in and Amber was gonna relook at those numbers to see if they needed to be adjusted, but nothing's been done since the last time.
So when you say deficit, that's not, is that? Never mind. I answered my own question. Sorry. Go ahead, Amy.
Can we please get that update next week?
Absolutely.
Any other questions on that?
For everybody out here, that deficit is because special ed?
Yes.
Okay. And.
Most in transportation.
Yeah. So that being said, are you, I mean, I know what our balance was, what, sorry, like three, under three sixty in the special ed capital reserve. So obviously that falls short of the three ninety. So is there an ability to move another forty grand?
Yeah. Yeah, we could pull some stuff out of technology if we had to. Yes, we can, we can pull a little bit, but money always frees up at the end because we have to, we have to book it as we know it right now, but we almost always get in a little bit of extra revenue. You know, we don't know yet how much money we're gonna need for plowing. We don't, you know, there are, there are still variables that change and nine times out of ten, it'd be free money up as we go along. So I think with our trust funds, we'll be fine.
So what's that timeframe look like? You know, in May, June, when do we as the board have to make the decision how much we're pulling out of trust to cover whatever?
Sometime in May because you can't cross fiscal years. So we have to have the public hearing and I mean, we can cross it, but it would be an audit sighting. So you know, if it was down to the wire, we may say, we're so concerned about this, we wanna wait a little longer and we'll just write something up for the auditors as justification if we have to, but we can wait until May-ish.
Okay. Any other questions about current year?
I think just the way it's going from what we've seen for the budget and where we are right now, we have to kinda like prepare for the worst. You know, that revenue may not show up, that those special ed costs. So just so everybody hopefully we don't have to have another meeting for the town, but.
And I just wanna emphasize, I understand that there are a lot of things going on, but I do expect to see those updates at each of our board meetings because this is a really critical issue.
Anything else? Alright, move on to five C, which is the budget for next year.
Actually, probably, we had, I don't see it down here. Before we move on to that, I know the can't think of the word right now. Wait one second.
Google.
Enrollment.
Oh, yeah.
That's like we're right at the cusp right now, what we budgeted for. So that's, that can be concerning because we did lose in November, December, we lost six students.
So the reconciliation comes in the following year. That was part of the, that was part of the difficulty of the way the agreement is written is we were, we wanted to reconcile it in the current year. So you're, you know, see, however we end this year, we may owe the districts a little bit of money out of next year's budget or they may owe us more money in revenue, but we won't know until the year closes out. But it could be, you're right, it could be an impact.
Um, is there any information as to where these six students went? I mean, two were from Pembroke and two were from?
Yeah, when they, when they leave us, there would be a code in the student information system that, you know, we have to designate whether they moved one to another school, whatever it was. We can, I can pull that if you want.
I think Dan might be able to answer that question with just some students that we know left.
I can look in the system and let you know.
Thank you.
Anything else on enrollment before we move on? I'm wondering if we wanna jump D ahead because I feel like the budget is really what we need to talk about all night. Is there anything for five D that we?
I think the, the preparations was really about how we're gonna handle the cut sheet and the cuts. So it makes sense to, that that will just end up being part of it and it will come, yeah, probably come after.
The one thing that I've mentioned to at least a couple of people, but I'm not, I didn't see the NBC has picked a date yet. But if they pick the eighth, I will not be here. I've talked to both Amy, sorry.
They did.
Oh, they did? Okay. Oh, my bad. Okay. So, yeah, so I won't be here on the eighth. I'll work with both Gene and Carrie and whoever. I typically at the public hearing, all I really do is a quick rundown of Amber's summary anyway. And since there's only twenty-one people there, it's, there shouldn't be a whole lot of question and answer, but but I'll be out of town that week. So where do we wanna jump into the budget?
I added.
Need to wear a red wig.
We went line by line by line by line as an administrative team and you know, I know that the cuts look small, but when we got to the end, it added up to a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So while it was painstaking work and you know, there's only a little bit here and a little bit there, we just felt that it was important to take every bit that we thought we could get to and wait, if nothing else, at least wait, put things off a year because of the significance of the increase this year. So I put the cut sheet in today that we got to. There's a line. I put the line number in case you wanted to refer to your budget, the account number, the title of the line, and then sometimes I made notes to the far right. So and I subtotaled by school. So Pembroke Academy came to ninety-one thousand, six ninety-six. Some of it was, we just went back through and level funded supplies or books or parts or those kinds of things. And then sometimes we made it a little bit lower than last year and really just felt like we're just gonna have to do with what we can. There's, the ten thousand dollars was the biggest cut at, I think at Pembroke Academy, well, one of the biggest at Pembroke Academy. And that was the hurdles. So we're gonna postpone those for a year. And then the maintenance projects, we lowered forty-five thousand dollars and we kept. Oh, that's wrong. I'm sorry. We kept four, I think it was seventy. We kept forty-five. So I think we cut twenty-five, not forty-five. Just realized that. I had, I couldn't remember what Josh said and I went back and asked him. Yeah, so the cut was twenty-five and we kept forty-five. He needs to make sure that he continues with the abatements. But we cut everything else out of that line. The rest were just, you know, sometimes we gave a little bit more than last year. Sometimes we had new things added in that we cut, like we cut the Adobe suite that was gonna be for the graphic design class. Some things we just lowered a little bit. At Pembroke Hill School, we just tried to find same thing. We, we tried to leave some and cut some, or we tried to level fund. Same, basically the same thing at Three Rivers. There was no, the significant decrease at Three Rivers School was in maintenance projects that was for dugouts and tree removals at Three Rivers. So that was almost twenty-five thousand dollars. So that was the biggest cut from Three Rivers. But like I said, it all added up and it totaled, except for the one that I made a mistake of twenty thousand off, it'll be over a hundred thousand dollars. And at this point, we're feeling like that's, that's saving a teacher. So that's what we came up with.
Discussion.
Can I ask a couple of questions? When I look through it, there's a I'm questioning the support staff workshops at PA for nine hundred and ninety-nine and support staff workshops at Pembroke Hill School.
It was each school, same amount. So the, they've had, the support staff have had like workshop money. They don't have it in their collective bargaining agreement, but we've always had it in the budget and they never wanna leave their kiddos. So we've been trying to do trainings here for them whenever possible, but we haven't, then nobody's ever taken advantage that I can remember going out of district to go to training.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what.
So if it's like para-educating training that we need to help with our specialization out of district place, I didn't know what those were.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And then the only other thing that I saw that I was wondering was at Pembroke Hill School, a thousand dollars for outside trainers under curriculum development?
We, so Wendy, I can let Wendy answer that, but we've, we've had money to bring, both bring people in and to send people out and we cut a little bit from both. Just feeling like we were gonna make do with what we have, really.
I'm good now. Okay. They were just kinda vague.
Yeah. Motion to reluctantly accept these cuts.
There a second?
Second.
More discussion?
If we can go back like at PA for the hurdles.
Yep.
That was on the line. It's also on the line with like replacement uniforms and stuff like that.
Yep.
Has that line been like? I mean, I know it's gonna be pennies at this point in time, but that do we, do we need to replace any uniforms? I mean, that's, I mean, that should probably be zeroed out this year especially.
So you would propose to cut any of the uniform replacement?
Again, I mean, if Dr. Morse could speak to this, the Makerspace, Space Supplies.
So that's actually a new line this year. What has been happening, the Makerspace is like our three D printers and our crickets and, you know, glow forges and those things. And all of those require some level of, you know, supplies. For instance, the, whatever you call it, for the three D printers. All of those things have been purchased through different supply lines. And we wanted to make the budgeting process cleaner, consolidate all of those into a Makerspace supply line. So it's not necessarily those things are new purchases. It's moving them out of the department supply lines into that.
That, is that pretty much level funded then at this point, removing the seven hundred?
No, it was zero. It was a new line.
Was, yes.
Yeah.
What's coming from last, compared to where it came, what came out of the department budget.
Oh, I mean, there may be a little bit of an increase and I mean, we can lower that to flatline it, but you know, I think that there I think there has been more of a demand and use of it. So it's.
I mean, we're nickel and diming right now.
Yeah.
And going to budget, it's not a comfortable feeling in there. Not for us, not for any of them, because they do understand. And I mean, this is basically, they're gonna look at this as like good faith. At this point in time, the biggest concern is not that, you know, we asked for a little guide. What are you looking for? What area do you need us to get to? And they were somewhat reluctant, never really got a, an answer out of that. I think it's gonna, this, this Thursday is when the hammer's gonna, they're gonna say, this is what you need to do. Or this is what we want you to do. But the reality is too, depending on who shows up at the March meeting, we could be looking, you know, at like scorched dirt. So I mean, this is good faith and everything like that, but we really, tonight at some point in time, we have to look beyond this. So we can be prepared, get it, you know, prepare ourselves for what may come. You know, I, I'm fine with this. Yes, we should save everything we can, as much as we can, but this is, I think this is unfortunately only the beginning.
Others?
I was just gonna say, if we are, you know, that's the, if we are taking the uniforms out of the budget, we probably need to be letting these. We probably need to let the, the coaches know, just because I know for a fact the hockey team is, the seniors are being allowed to purchase their jerseys at the end of the season. So just, just an FYI, just so that going forward, we can, we'll know that. They need to probably be notified as soon as possible because I know that is something that they do.
I am not in favor of either of the suggestions that Gene made, with all due respect to your suggestions, Gene. We have emails from, I think, members of the municipal budget committee, you know, questioning whether maybe the curriculum at the Pembroke School District is not, you know, for example, technology forward enough. So like looking at Makerspace budget line items, I don't think that's somewhere we wanna cut. And with respect to the uniforms, I think this is the third time that Patty has had to sit down with the administration and have a conversation about, you know, I know that you have created a budget that funds what you believe to be adequate to educate the students, but we need to cut. And uniforms didn't make that cut for a reason that I don't know, but I have to respect. Because the people that understand the conditions of the uniforms had, had a reason, you know. So the people that know the condition of, you know, the hurdles, the library books, the uniforms, they made this cut list and I defer to their expertise in that cut list.
Others?
As the uniforms go, and correct me if this has changed, but I know they're like, like vehicles, they're on a replacement cycle. So you know, it's like maybe four or five years out of the uniforms and they flop them over. So yeah, some of them could be destroyed and I agree with you wholeheartedly if you can't have your kids going out there with, you know, holes in their uniforms and so forth. But if, you know, and again, that was probably set, you know, with input. You know, are, are the soccer teams shirts shredded? You know, that kinda thing. If we're into that situation and we can't have them go and looking like they're just rolling out of the gutter, but you know, and there is a cycle. So hopefully that cycle allows for a little bit of leeway. And that's why I was suggesting it, so.
I hate looking at these things. I hate talking about it because I get preachy and I don't like any of this.
So.
I mean, I was like, you're gonna have a sports team, they need to have uniforms. And if you're gonna have a track team, you need to have hurdles. And if you're gonna have a Makerspace, you have to have filament for the three D printers. And if the librarian says she needs seventy-five hundred dollars worth of library books, she needs seventy-five hundred dollars worth of library books. And I mean, there's a couple of things in here that I'm looking at and, you know, I trust your opinions, travel to conferences and stuff. I could see that maybe that's a line that doesn't actually get utilized at the amount that we fund it. So like, okay, but I just have such a hard time with the stuff on here that's gonna directly impact the kids or instruction. Like I could make an argument that we probably don't need the Adobe suite graphic design thing. I would argue that there's probably an open source package that does the same thing for free or cheap. But most of the things that I'm seeing on here, it if you look at it in terms of, of saving a position, I completely understand that. But I guess the way I'm looking at it, at least tonight and tomorrow morning, maybe I'll feel differently, is we're talking about, what's the bottom line this year, thirty-three point five million? What's the overall?
Yeah, I think it's thirty-three something. Yeah.
So a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars is, is like Gene said, it's, it's nothing but good faith. And I'm not, I'm not saying I don't wanna convey that good faith. But when I look at this list, what I'm looking at is making teachers' lives more difficult. Asking an art teacher to teach without the supplies that they've requested. You know, not replacing a kiln and a, and a pottery wheel. So I'm assuming we offer some sort of pottery and we won't be able to if those things aren't replaced. I mean, it, it looks like we're lowering the quality of the education that we can provide and at the cost of, of a tiny fraction of the overall budget. And I just, I just don't know that I can.
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
If you don't mind. I think bringing this tonight was in response to you wanting to be prepared for March meeting.
Yeah.
To say, we need a list of cuts ready. So I wasn't sure what your intentions were, if you were gonna, you know, do this tonight and give it to the NBC, or if you were going to say, we have a prepared cut list that we support. If we get to that point at March meeting that we need to start taking away, we agree with you, administration, that this is gonna be the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go.
Yeah.
If, once we start cutting.
I guess maybe we should step back a second and have that discussion amongst us. And, and I think, I think you're on the right track. I think like Gene said, you know, if we get to March meeting and somebody in the public makes a suggestion for a budget number, it's gonna be significantly more than a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar cut. So kinda the way that I see this process going and everybody jump in and tell me if you're picturing the same thing is I would say like, this is, this is, this whole thing is sort of one item. And then it's like, well, what about after that? If somebody suggests taking a million dollars off the top. And I think that we are intentionally reserving all conversation about positions and things until non-public because they're easily identified with staff members. But I, I see this as like one item and it's a very small item. It's definitely, I think the item at the top of the list, but it's a teeny tiny item in the grand scheme of things. So I, I didn't mean to like criticize the list. I'm just saying on the whole, like if, if it were up to me to pick the budget number we already have or lower it by a hundred and fifty-six thousand, just to take it back to the NBC to say, well, here's what we can do. I, I don't think in my mind that the gain or the goodwill, whatever it's worth, is worth the cost of, of the things I'm seeing in front of me. But that's just my opinion. But process wise, is everybody like, we, we're gonna have a discussion on public and I think we need to come up with, I don't wanna say we need to come up with a number, like we have to, we have to find, you know, one point five million dollars worth of stuff because that gives suggestions, you know, when people are watching this video and I don't wanna put that in anybody's head. Like, I think, I think the NBC, at least a few members backed this up. I think that they recognize that while this budget that we've put forth is scary big, it's not unreasonable. They have not been able to identify an area that they think that we should cut money from. They haven't given any suggestions. They've asked a lot of good questions about certain areas. But when those questions have been answered satisfactorily, they have not yet come back and said, well, here's something we really think that you could do without. So to me, that's a responsible budget. And I think we need to be prepared amongst ourselves, but I really don't wanna be saying, hey, we've prepared two million dollars worth of cuts because then somebody's gonna get up and say, cool, do that. I don't know how everybody else feels. So I think that there's gonna be a little bit of, there might be, have to be a little bit more discussion after we come out in non-public tonight too, depending on how that goes. Like we're, gotta strategize a little bit tonight with all the information. So then I guess I'll stop ranting. What other comments do people have about the sheet in front of us?
Procedurally, is the feeling on the board that I should withdraw my motion?
Oh, I forgot there was a motion on the table. Yes, thank you. I guess that's up to everybody.
I'm happy to withdraw it.
Was there a second?
Yeah.
My feeling is we, we should at least, at the very least retain this.
Well, I mean, this document is not going anywhere.
Right, retain it as. We're gonna need that document.
Yeah. I mean, we can go ahead and take a vote, Amy, too. Like if, if, if three out of the five of us say, let's just put these in and that's what we should do. That's how it works. So I mean, I'm okay with continuing with the.
Literally everything on there, aside from the projects, everything affects students in the school.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna withdraw my motion. If someone else wants to make the motion, they can.
But you know, it's.
We could always do that again later too, if that's appropriate.
But it is, again, all it would be is, is good faith.
And that's where I'm torn because I get that and I get the value in that. I don't, I don't wanna say like, you know, screw those guys or whatever. I completely get that, but.
This will not change the outcome of the March meeting.
My thinking at this moment is if we vote in to cut these. to cut these expenses from the budget right now, it, right now limits our flexibility.
Agreed. So I guess before, before we go too far, um, is there anything else that, outside of, you know, positions, personnel, whatever you want to call it, that anybody has found in the budget in the past week or two or three since we've met, that they want to ask either Patty or admin about, that's not on this list? Okay. Is there anything else about the budget broadly before we, yeah?
Do you mind if I just share with you the edits to the warrant so that I can give it to the NBC?
Very good.
Okay with you? It's very simple. Uh, so a lot of times we copy and paste language from other warrant articles. So there were just a few things that got missed. Uh, some of them that are raised from no taxation said up to the amount and some just said the amount. So we made it consistent and they all say up to, so that they get funded in the order, you know, if you did that. And then the board at some point in the past had, um, you know, people had raised the issue. It says no amount to be raised from taxation, but that's not true because this is already tax dollars. So we had, uh, chosen to add the word additional taxation at some point in the past. Some of them had that language and some of them didn't. So we changed it so that they all say additional taxation and they all say up to if it's a surplus. Um, and that was all that Dean suggested that we change.
That one's not, that's not the one in our drive, right?
It should be.
This, yeah.
Numbers, like number six doesn't say up to one hundred?
I don't know. I'm looking at eleven and it doesn't say additional. Some of them do, but the last couple don't.
Yeah, nope, then you don't have the current one. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, this, I'll make a note to have Ashley put the.
In the right folder, right?
Yeah, it's.
Let me make sure.
Okay, so.
Yeah, any other questions about the changes?
I don't know that you've, uh, yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, we've already done.
Because it's, yeah, it's just, it's just like, yeah, wording. So I think you're okay. Yeah. I just didn't want to give the NBC a version that you hadn't seen yet. So I wanted to make sure you were okay with that. Great.
Okay. So it sounds like we're moving the, the five D to the other side of non-public. Is that?
Probably. I think so.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Or Wendy still be here? About March meeting? So can I ask something positive? So March meeting's happening, the budget passed. Everybody made it through. Can we plan on like some slides about, hey, guess what? Next year coming is Hill School and some pitchers and stuff. Will we have that many people there?
I, I, well, so what the?
No, but I'm just saying there's going to be most amount of people in there.
Yeah, um, I, I gotta talk to the moderator about that unless you want, if you want to reach out to.
So I'm saying after the vote.
Yeah.
I know.
Could you, do you mind? I think we need to talk to Tom Seraphin about it. We need to talk to the moderator. It's his meeting, technically. Um, I think it's a good idea. I think that, I think that everybody at the town office and NBC would be happy to get information out there as much as possible. I just don't know procedurally how that works with the meeting, but that's Tom's job. So if you want to email Tom.
Absolutely, nothing.
Yeah, can you talk to him? Okay.
I mean, absent that, it doesn't mean that we can't, where people are checking in, in the lobby, have the poster board and
Right.
Some other things.
I just thought it'd be a good way to say, hey, this is. Yeah, after.
All right, so don't, don't show anything then. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, have it the next week at the town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Uh, so actually, this is going to sidetrack us, but hopefully not too much. I had a question about that and I know you guys haven't had meetings, so, um, has there been any further discussion? And if this is going to open a can of worms, you can all just throw things at me and I'll shut up altogether. Have you guys discussed at all, or ha, is it actually on the table? Now that we've pushed it back a year to consider what Dr. Morris had mentioned about location.
Yes.
Um, for what it's worth, I happen to think that's a very worthwhile consideration. Um, and well, we can have the electric bus garage at the property we own up there. But yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to see if that was, I wanted to make sure that was getting into discussions.
We were supposed to meet the snowstorm day. Um, so I'll send another email or you, we can make sure we schedule another one, but everybody was full steam ahead and it was on.
Yeah, we brought it up.
Okay, okay. I think of it every day when I pick up my children.
Do you consider the electric bus thing? Cause it's not looking to that industry at the moment.
Why?
I don't know. A bunch of people had their Teslas die and now.
Oh, in Chicago. Yeah.
UNH has had electric bus fleet for like over a decade.
Yeah, that's, that's a Tesla problem. It's not an electric car problem.
Um, sorry, since we're doing tangents, um, what time and what location is the meeting on February eighth? Okay.
Yeah, in the auditorium.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, and, um, we'll update to, I think some wires got crossed, but the Saturday meetings are not changing this year. They're going to be at ten o'clock, not nine o'clock. Somehow I think the message got across that we really wanted to change it for whatever reason. And what actually happened is this was discussed last year. I think NBC's the one that brought it up and everybody in the world forgot about it except Patty. So Patty just wanted to check in and see, hey, are we doing that? Um, but the chair of the select board did say she thinks people would like it, um, and that they might socialize it somehow at the meetings this year, um, so that there's a heads up. And so it, somebody's going to have to remember again for next year. Uh, but for this year, the, the Saturday meetings will be at ten like they always have been.
I think we did.
I think Mark did last year and that's what, that's what prompted the whole thing, but.
I made a note, so I wouldn't forget, but I guess no one else, no one else made a note.
Okay, um, policies. See page two.
Yes. So those are the list of policies that are, were at the very top that we had committed to, uh, taking care of at this meeting.
Right. Um, are we, is everybody okay with these? Anything that we need to hold on table till next time?
You want to go? Okay, so I just briefly, because these are like second and third readings.
Yep.
The AC, ACN, I saw the one with my edits in the drive in the combo with the school board association. That one looked fine to me. EBCC, school board association policy looked fine. EHAB, it looks like it was approved with the new revisions. So I saw that in the school board association, September twenty twenty-three. That's the most recent. I just had a question on that.
Yes.
Okay. Same with GBCD, GCA and JKAA. I only had a question on the GCA that also was just mentioning one paragraph, September twenty twenty-three. So as long as we include that language, I was totally fine.
Yep. Okay, great. Perfect.
Any, can you address them?
Oh, sorry.
Um, the only thing I was going to say, and I, I'm new to the whole policy thing, so please excuse me if I'm doing this backwards. But, um, I was reading through the school one and comparing it to the New Hampshire School Board Association one. The only thing I found was that uh, New Hampshire School Board has under, uh, let's see.
Which policy are you looking at?
I'm sorry. Uh, the EHAB, sorry. Um, under letter B, uh, let's see, number one, small letter E, they have small letter F and I, I think that's important to include. Um, let me just grab it real quick. It says a provision that students participating in career exploration or career technology education may, with written parental consent, register for the technology platforms and services to be used, blah, 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 blah. I think because we have CRTC, we need to add that to our policy, but other than that, I think, so my question is.
Yeah, so I was going to, um, say that when the school board policies are redone because of legis, recent legislation or they tweak them, we would typically make a motion to approve the new school board sample.
Okay.
If you found something in yours that you say, hey, the new sample doesn't have this and I want to keep this, we could do that.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for asking that though.
Nope, that's good. Okay, so I think we, and the only, the bomb threat one was the one that I was working on and I do have to apologize because I did not get my edits over. But I do have them, so I can.
We can hold that one if you want to.
Can we just hold the bomb threat one? It won't take me long to type that up.
Absolutely.
Kind of went through and there was things in the New Hampshire one that I felt like we needed. There was things in ours that I felt like we needed to kind of combine, so. Um, but the, I'm, I'm ready to move on the other ones.
I'm losing jeans. Okay, um, so does somebody want to make a motion regarding everything except EBCC?
Okay, um, I'll do it. I think I will. Um, I make a motion to adopt the New Hampshire, right, New Hampshire School Board Association policies, ACN with Melanie's corrections or additions, I should say.
Yeah, as, as amended.
As amended, okay. All right, um, EHAB, GBCD, GCA and JKAA.
I'll second it.
Yep, JC.
JCA and JKAA. Yes.
Uh, and Melanie, I second it. Is there any further discussion on those guys?
I just wanted to say thank you to the two of you so much for digging into these.
Agreed. All right, then all in favor of approving policies ACN, EHAB, GBCD, JCA and JKAA? We say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I don't think we need to formally table EBCC. We'll just bring in it next time.
Yep, I'll just put it on the next one.
Awesome. It feels good to get some of those done. Thank you very much.
Happy, thank you.
Okay, uh, we still don't have any public to provide comment. So the board has need to go into non-public session in accordance to New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, small letters A and C. A is the dismissal, promotion, compensation or disciplining of an employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her. And C is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. On a roll call vote to enter non-public at seven fourteen. Carrie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And, um, yes.